Too many dollars could be able to be done if we had to change what they were doing instead of trying to build something that was earthquake proof, windproof, you know, because it's just gonna be natural disaster. So where do we go with that money? Is that money still available? Is there some way that we can reconfigure what we're doing and still get the two million dollars? It's, I don't, I don't understand where we're going. When you get grant money, if there's a process, and being on many boards and advisory council of the city of Beaumont and Jefferson County over some years, you have to figure out how to manage that money and what you can do with it and if you can adjust it if it doesn't fit what you're doing. So if we still have that money available, and I don't know that until we find that out, we should use, utilize that money to the best of our ability for the good of the citizens of this community. And we can have a new city hall, we can have a civic center, a building that someone could rent for a birthday party or a wedding or whatever, but we don't need to build a federal government building. We need to build something that is usable and practical for this community. So where are we at on those? That's my question.
Thank you. Next person is Matthew Docfree.
My name is Matthew Docfree. Me and my wife have been in the neighborhood since 2014. And we're obviously here before Harvey, so we feel familiar. And I have the same, same similar questions. I was here for the, for the budget meeting the other night, and I see a lot of money that we have got from grants, a lot of money that's proposed to be spent. And there's really no transparency, especially from, from you folks. There's no transparency to tell us citizens about where the money's going, where it's at. It seems very disturbing that you, that you guys decide that you want to play a game with our money. And I don't think that's right. We appointed you here. You, you work for us, okay? We don't work for you. We're, we're here in this community, maybe just like you. I have a bill here from Sparklight that I noticed the other night that has franchise authority contact Rebecca Ford and her email address. Why is she still getting information about our community? Who is allowing this? That's, that's a question for you. I think this is a problem. This is a big problem. And I think there's some underlying things that you as the city council need to tell us, the community that lives out here, what is going on? We ask you questions about things and you get defensive. And that seems like a child when he gets caught with their hand in the cookie jar. It's, it's, it's very, it's a block. Right? I don't, I don't know what's going on with our money.
Thank you. Um, Barbara, I would like to know if you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I've got several topics while I'm covered. The first one being, there's rumors going around that we want to change the garbage trunk. I retired from Republicans last year, no longer. But I know for a fact, if you have not called them with any of your concerns over the garbage trunk, still in contact with you. Now, nobody else in here probably knows it, but you want to go to find Woods who wants to raise our rates so you can add to your water bill, which is already an astronaut.
Amen.
As long as you touch that, I think that if you're doing that, all you're doing is you're not looking out for anyone in this community's interest. What you are doing is trying to create a high standard of living with a high property taxes, bad property taxes for both Harv and Jefferson, high water bills. I think you're trying to keep minorities and low income families from rebuilding in this area. And I think that we need to contact ACLU to come and investigate why all these water bills are bouncing all over the map, because you can't keep them trapped. But I did pull up the Texas Administrative Code for Watering. And it says in here that you can read, upon request of customer, each utility is responsible to come out and test the meter on site in front of us. Do we have anybody here to test our water meters on site? That's a question.
This is a question I'm excited to hear.
Okay, so basically you can't answer that. Because it says, and availability upon request. I don't think that we have that bill. So handy land quality meters and digital readings. Now, the other question I have is, these are all requests that were sent to Drew for FOIA information. From my attorney with my signature, there was a request that, I don't know what you're talking about. I do not understand what you're doing. Now, this guy has never won a lawsuit in his life. And if you're gonna go up against a public service in the second largest garbage country in the world, you better get something better than Drew. Because if the contract does not expire and there's up to six months left, you will be paying all of it. You cannot weasel out if you're not gonna get out early. And just because you want to make twenty-five, fifty cents, a dollar, a can more into your coffers for you to waste, it's bullshit. Because you've already rep, given everybody in this community a good agreement over a water bill, a fee, that everybody up here says, oh, Martha was on the board, on the council when it was first put in there, oh, we gotta raise the user fees, but we're gonna review it every ninety days. Has anyone here ever seen a piece of paper from the city saying, hey, we reviewed it, we can't lower it? No, no. Okay, so you're representing us, and you're all subject to election. And if you're not doing your job, then you're gonna be gone, and I'm gonna stand back and I'm gonna run for mayor next year, because you don't have a clue what you're doing. You wasted money on trying to figure out how to get a grant. You won another grant and wasted, wanna forgive the wrong, when you can't even finish the paperwork to the grant administrator on the ones we have. And that's proven fact. You're cutting councilmen out of vital information to do their job to represent their wards.
Yep.
I mean, what's going on? Why do you have to try to be Queen Becky, Becky Ford, that we had, that we voted you in to get rid of? You went around saying, okay, when I get elected, we're gonna put all county, all the city contracts up for bid that are due. Now, there was one time that we went out on a limb and we hired a veteran-owned business to mow all the parks. And it was only a few weeks later, Becky didn't happy, Becky fired and brought cousins back in because they mowed her lawn. Has that ever been put up for bid? No. Has Drew's position been changed? No. Have you hired a different CPA that double-checked the records from before? No. I mean, come on, you're sitting here wanting to spend millions of our tax dollars when you can't even fix a street, you've got a six acre park without a bathroom for a kid. So now, if I'm down there playing with my grandson and he says, grandpa, I gotta go poopy, we gotta run all the way back to my house because he's gotta go poop. You have this empty city hall that's down there with gates on the doors that you can easily make into a city public bathroom for the park. They wasted money on thirteen acres over here that should go to DB6 to put in a retention area. So when we do get hot water, it doesn't come up into our areas, it goes into the retention pond and stays there and keeps ten to twenty houses dry. If you save fifteen houses, it's a win. But no, you wanna create a walking trail or apartment.
It's, that's, no, it's not a, yeah, it's, I have my timer going, it's not up, it's got thirty seconds.
She got it, he got it.
My three, 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 six.
See, so either y'all get your heads together and say, hey, I'm representing people. Well, the people are gonna get their heads together, we're gonna get rid of you. Now, I am gonna be calling the ACLU to come investigate this, because there's some real fishy business going on in this town. And Barbara, would you please step down and let someone know what you're doing in your job?
Thank you. Ronnie Robison.
Thank you.
It doesn't matter.
He owns property here.
Thank you. Uh, I hear the echoes of the complaints and the problems, and I get calls from time to time. I was gonna move out here some years ago, but the way this city council board was operating, meeting with them, it just didn't make sense for me to move my family out here, my kids were moving out here. We bought houses for each one of them. And hearing these, these citizens that are y'all, when you're not on the board, you need to come together, you need to work together. These people are begging, begging. And if you ignore it, then something will be done. And it may not be here, but I promise you God hears you. God knows. You can't fool God. And we're in a church facility, so I believe this is a spiritual place. So protect these people. Protect yourself. Do what's right. These people go through hurricanes way too often. They don't need one from the board. Work with your conscience. Work with these people. Let's everybody get along. Thank you.
Next, Tony Acanda, Officer Duncan Mallory, who will be talking about school's progress.
Yeah.
You're done.
Hey, they already start.
All right. Hey, first of all, I'm not gonna be long, because I know you have city visits to talk about more. Uh, but I wanted to come in front of you guys, because we've been going countywide, talking about the recent shootings in the valley, and what we're doing at the sheriff's office, and how we're protecting your kids. I thought this is a great city, nothing I can get. A lot of people want room to talk about our efforts and what we're going for. I don't know if you guys got kids in hardships, school districts, some of you guys, and I'll see our guys out there more on drop-off, drop-off lines and throughout the day. So if you get calls that our deputies are going out to the schools, or we said, there, walk around the school, that's what we're pushing more of. Before the Uvalde shooting, no one ever really paid attention to throughout the day what's going on at the school. So you wanna say, hey, does my mom afford me for some of it? I can say yes. We could, because we never really focused on it, because we felt that the school had security, security of the kids, and that could cause us if something comes up. But taking our role and responsibilities, we know that we have to be more visual at the school, and we need the community to be more comfortable with us in those areas. Like I said before, Uvalde, you see a police officer in the school, you're like, what's going on, kids? Run into the school, call the school, what's going on? So as of today, the state of Texas just opened up grants to try to get more children to schools. And so we, uh, when we respond to a situation, God forbid it happens here, that we can go after it. Or we're trying. Yes, we are trying. We are trying to handle after shooters. At sheriff's office, we train, uh, make sure our guys go through that shooting course. No, we're not trained to sit and wait. We're trying to go directly through. My philosophy of it is, is that I hope, you know, that I'm, I'm, everything's right for me, because it could be my day at that, especially when it comes to our kids. But how much do we trust the police? How much do we rely on the police? How much do we rely on that we're gonna do the right thing? We have a full-time SWAT team. And if something happens at the school right now, by the time our SWAT team gets to that location, it will be over. No one ever thought about that, what it's. See, the Columbine shooting was different. Everyone remember the nineties in Colorado, Columbine shooting. That was different compared to this one. So we, we, we all sat back and we thought, hmm, are we ready? So what we done? We went to training. We get our SWAT team together, everybody got together, we went out to this training site, and we were like, okay, we're ready. We're, we're caught on, we're switched on. So we got these M-16 guns that were going into all this tech gear. We go in, but one different scenario that they didn't tell us, they're gonna have a live ammunition, I mean, uh, blank ammunition, AK-47 on the side of it. Everybody on that SWAT team had a pause, you know why? Because we never trained for that. We go on the range, we shoot at targets, and we don't get shot back in. Listen, I'm just telling you, realistically, police work before Uvalde, this is statewide, this is just our Jefferson County, this is everywhere. And so everybody realized real quick, how quick, that you have to be turned on. Now, our guys, there, they're not running, they're just another north person. Because on the range, when we're trying, we got earplugs in, we got eye goggles on, and we got all the safety equipment on. But no one ever thought about what it's gonna really sound like if I don't have my earplugs in, because I'm not. Every shooting we've had, no one had earplugs in, no one had eye goggles in. And so we put our guys in our situations now to, to be able to adapt ongoing. Now, in the communities, I appreciate everybody, everybody's hand downs been, thank you for what you do, we really appreciate that. But I want to extend another courtesy of thanking you for what you do. Because without the community, we cannot do our jobs. We can't do our jobs without teachers, we can't do our jobs without grandparents, even the trash people who come pick up the trash, we can't do our jobs. I know you guys probably have complaints of what goes on in, in the community of our teachers and everything, and we work diligently to try to get that done. We've increased patrols, and we've increased everything that we can possibly do with your tax dollars to the best of our ability, without increasing your tax dollars to, uh, provide effort and finances for the sheriff's office. Wednesday evening, and this is where I really want everybody to think, think about schools, think about churches, think about big buildings. But how many of us think about our homes? How many of us do?
I do, I'm a firearms instructor.
Okay. You're a firearm, you're a firearms instructor?
I am currently, yeah.
Okay. What were you doing last Wednesday?
That's what I was out working.
You were working where?
Uh, Gold Drive.
Who was at your home?
Uh, my hundred-and-forty-pound German Shepherd and my combat veteran neighbor.
Okay, so let me give you this scenario. A guy speeding through Lumberton, Texas.
I know, I heard about it.
Comes right through here, ends up here. Now, right for that, we were on that, we were quick, it was perfect ideal, we got the situation taken care of. But how many people think like you?
How many?
To be turned on at home. Guys, we gotta be turned on at home. Because we can just be sitting in our front room, and it can happen just that quick. It happened just that quick. Give us that.
And I don't know anything at all.
And, and, and so what happened was a guy, he was drunk from the police, he was staying in Beverly Hills, he lived in Beverly Hills, and he ran into someone else's yard, got out the car, he was gonna try to run into the house. But we got to him before. So I'm just telling you, you gotta have these conversations with your kids about going to school, with your kids about standing at the bus stop, with your wife about being at home by herself, if you leave your home by yourself to your neighbors. We gotta have these conversations. We gotta become America. We gotta become what we were built to be. We gotta become one. No matter what's going on, we still gotta protect each other. Because this community, out of all communities, has been through a lot. Been through a lot. Hot water, ice storms, you name it. But at the end of the day, y'all gotta stay together. Y'all gotta be God's kids. Y'all gotta get through these things together. Now, I'm not here for the business of Beverly Hills. I'm here for the safety and security to make sure everybody, the starting conversation, have a plan in your house. Someone invaded our front door in the middle of the night, where are we going first? My daughter lives on the other side of my house. And she called me the other day, she was home at home, sixteen-year-old daughter, said someone's knocking at the door. I am the chief deputy of Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, and I did not have a plan for my house. How scary is that? Pick up the phone, call my brother, was it a cop too? Hey, where are you? I'm in a meeting, get to my house. Call me, call the deputy, hey, where are you? Get to my house, please get to my house. I'm begging to get to my house. By the time I get to my house, guy been defending on the door, he's gone. And do you know I don't have a camera at my house? I am the chief deputy of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. And I don't have a camera on my house. I have a bear. But, but you see what I'm saying? So just like me, think about where you're at and where your homes are, and how safe is your home? Okay? I want you to all be mindful of that. When you take, take your kids to school, talk to them, for after shooter coming to your school, talk to them. Let's be, let's be open there. The school is doing a phenomenal job with coming up with plans. Guys, I'm telling y'all, from Hatchet Connect, the heart of Jefferson, in the sheriff's office, I've never seen it in the twenty years I've been here. The, the, the partnership that we built within the past six months, I have never seen it. Because we missed that one opportunity. Okay? So when you see our guys out there, if you got something, if you see something, say something. You think someone's looking strange, say something. You know someone is talking about, hey, going up to the school, you think someone is crazy. We have a full-time mental health unit that will go out and check these people before, even if you just think they're crazy. Hey, that person needs to be checked. We will send them out there, and they'll follow along. Okay? Again, call me anytime you want, chief member of the sheriff's office. That's all I have, and I'm not gonna hold y'all accountable.
Next, Tony Acanda is, uh, Mr. Clung. You wanted to speak?
How much time do I have?
As much as you want.
That's what I was told, as much as I don't have.
Absolutely.
And I'm having it spelled, because I, uh, I have got some drawings, I've got one on whiteboard, and I've got one on, on each one of y'all that I have. I came because I approached the bridge on here a couple of months ago, the second time. I wanted to know if you all could take those trees next to my house, out of there, remove them. They're over seventy, eighty feet high. I just, and June the seventeenth, I had one of those trees, lightning striking, it hit my house, and lightning, uh, electricity went all through my house, hit my breaker box, it exploded, and, uh, set the house on fire, and I had no control, it burned to the ground. I want those trees removed. They're not doing a bit of good, except picking up space. And I've done, I've done a lot of work, I've taken pictures. Uh, if any of you all want to see what it looks like, you can come up my driveway and I'll show you. You can use that green rain. Goes, and, and one time I was mowing six, seven feet on the other side of the fence by my property. After Harvey, that's no longer, that piece of property went to pop, so it's great. It's worthless. There's nothing in there but fallen down trees. There's about five dead trees with no tops going in there. And it's a wasted piece of property. And I want it removed. Alan Pride is no longer on the ground. Don promised me that he would build a ditch in there to take away the dirt, the water, and cut it on my property. That's another thing. A years ago, Betty Adams, Sheria, Sheria, I'm sorry, I know her real well. Uh, she had a lot of dirt called in there in the back of the civic center to forlay the water that comes over on my property. They did, they had a stack there, and what'd they do? They run a roller or whatever in there and push it all on one side, and then cut a ditch on the other side. I told her, I said, Sheria, I said, that water comes from both ways, it came over on my property. And it, it was coming on my property right now. And there's no ditches on my property, except what I've done with the shovel. I've lived there fifty-one years. I've put up with people, uh, you see the number, the number I've got up down at the bottom, decent, the amount of families that have been in those houses since I've been there. Twenty of them. They've all poured dirt in their property, because they didn't have anybody, no ditches at all. But they forced it over my property, and I'm thinking, Jeff, I've got over a hundred feet of eight-inch high water pipe buried in the property next to those trees to get the water out of, out of my yard. When a melba hit, there was a gentleman came up on the door, official, and I don't know who it was, said, you're fine, you don't have any water in your house. We left, and right there, it went out there, and there was five inches of water in the house. It came in the back door, came in the back. That water, when what we have, one of our diluges out there, there is no land showing in my acre backyard, none. It's all water. The only way it can come out is through that pipe that comes down the side of my property. The one thing that's bad about it, that when those trees got that high, what is it that those trees have, they, they what? Roots. Those roots came underground, of course, they're better. They went under the pipe and raised it, water would not leave. That's why we got put in a melba. I need a ditch somewhere there so for somebody to take care of it, after fifty-one years that I've been putting up with it. And I feel like I, and Alan promised, well, he thought he was still gonna have a mansion there out there, but he promised that there would be a, a ditch dug on that, on your property to take away the flow of water. Where does the water go after it leaves the civic center? On my property and the ditches I dug. Do I have any questions or have?
Then when y'all?
I'm sorry?
When, when you spoke to Alan, was, did, did they say that they were gonna do this during the council? Or did he come and talk to you? I'm gonna talk to Alan. But do you remember if it was during the council? That he told you they would dig it?
No, it was not in the council, it was in the back of the civic center. He said, oh, when they build that, when they build that civic center out there, they're gonna build a ditch. That's all he told me.
Do you know if these trees are in the easement or, because usually utility easements are pretty?
Could you speak up so we can all hear you, please?
Yes, I was asking if we know if these trees are in the utility easement or not?
Uh, my builder, the builder just told me today, they did the, um,
They did one to survey?
Yes, they did survey, and they just found out, it's only a ten-foot easement on each side, and so no, they're not in the easement.
So they're actually on your property?
No, the trees are actually in Beverly Hills' property, it's the city's.
If you look at my tract of land, seventy-four ten, sweet gum, there is no utility easement listed on here for instance.
Is there a reason why the city can't cut these trees for him?
They gotta go, I can't build, that's a change far, I'm doing trees there.
If we can ask him to basically sign an agreement with the city, the whole city harmless or pass in tree events, that may appease him and this will get the same time, to get these trees removed and make everybody happy.
All right. Why is a goal immediately, what is so important about those three trees?
Well, you asked to have those trees removed, correct?
Yes.
And that's, that's why I was asking the mayor, what can we do to appease the city and you at the same time to have these removed for you? Because I'd like to have them removed for you.
All right, let me tell you another thing, there was two more trees west of, right next to my utility pole. They don't show on that, because the city gave, uh, permission to take those trees out of there, because there was a light stuck on, on the utility pole shining over at the park for a safety sake. That light is no longer functional. And, uh, I called this, but, uh, It's been out for well over two months.
Barbara, it's been out. Mr. Clung, what I'll do is I'll take personal responsibility, I'm going to write up something that I feel is going to appease the city and possibly you, present it to you and the city, so we can come to some type of agreement to remove these trees for you.
Thank you. And? And I have to do a ditch and?
I've got a backhoe on my tractor, he'll do it, I mean, I've got, I've got stuff and, or a vaulter.
No, I can answer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it. Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it.
I'll take the dirt.
No, I don't think no more skirt it up. Exhibit.
Seems like it would be beneficial to the city because we are planning on rebuilding that civic center. It was a miracle. It's became rebuildable now. And we're gonna, we're, we plan on trying to rebuild the civic center. And that would just add some more parking space and some more space back there if we got, actually, we just paid a contractor to hide some trees back there.
I was thinking that somebody would have caused those three trees. There was more, more lights.
Those trees are the ones we did, they dropped that, that tree.
I was afraid somebody was gonna stay from it. They're beautiful, they're very important. And I was gonna say, well, why did you, you, that's no light?
Um, all, all trees, a lot of people think all trees are, I love trees.
Well, I do too. I was talking about, okay, now I'm on the tree tree.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
I'm not against trees. If trees were ten feet on the other side of your James Creek?
They're, they're not real far on the other side of the fence. You know, our fence is here and then the, the trees are over in the woods, used to be woods. Uh, but the woods have dwindled through the years where there's very little left over there.
They, they've been one side by the control. You know, they've come in one side that's true, you know, for the power line. Cut all the lamps off one side, so they're very easy to cut because all the whites on the side going away from the power.
I just wonder why, why they couldn't build again, why you couldn't start building.
Well, okay, he's worried about building again.
Oh, no, 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 they're not, they're not, they're not feeling this.
I was worried that anybody that knows me knows what, uh, I've got in my house. In the fifty-one years, there has been forty-five people that I can name. If you all want to sit on a meeting, that have lived in my house. I've taken them in because they didn't have, didn't have a place to stay. And, and to have those trees right there and fall on my house and kill somebody? No. That's why I will not build until those trees crawl. I have to remove a tree that was in back of my house. It's about, it was a ceiling after I moved in and the thing is about sixty feet high. I'm gonna have to drop it down.
So let me ask councilman a question. Is this, is this something that we're gonna have to bring back to councils above them? Or is councilman agree to, uh, I don't think we should, we should be a.
They were just, just, do it now and do it.
Wait, won't we go out and bid?
No. Well, no, it's honestly, though, that house is a property, because you've got a house on that property, we need somebody licensed and bonded to cut it down, just to be safe. How far, how close, see, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because I don't know exactly which ones are some of the trees on that property. Uh, but how close are they to that?
They're, they're about, they're about ten feet from the utility, okay? At one side. Now, now, I think that if we contacted energy and told them that we were gonna cut those trees down. And do y'all want a piece of this, you know, explaining to them the situation, they might take a piece of this. And they already have people that they're paying every day to cut trees down, whether they're cutting trees down or they're at the holiday, they're beginning to pay. Okay, they got brandy truck, brandy, everything, good trees. Their contractors.
But here's the other question I ask. Because we're cutting the trees down because he's afraid it'll fall on his house. Will we send the presidents? Presidents, where, now any citizen in the city who is afraid a tree is gonna fall down and then happens to be on a city piece and we have to go through and hurt trees?
I came back from I, and I saw that.
I don't want, I don't want any, I just want that question answered.
They would have to come and do the same thing.
That's what I'm saying. If we have something that's.
They would have to come and do exactly what Mr. Clark is doing, basically filling out the form and.
I don't really know where we have any, any state properties there next year now. Other than that new property we bought over there, those houses that are covered there, and we got dead man's city on, we dead. Or behind those houses, thirteen acres. You know about.
I have seen, I have seen, uh, out there, uh, trees and, uh, out of there. Your tree, that is a shackle right there. It's so full of trees. Yeah.
Can we drop, can we drop and then everybody, if they want firewood, come get it, they're all oak trees. Well, I disagree with that because after that last tornado that went through, they picked up a whole bunch right here on Sweet Gum. They picked that river bend, the, the twenty stop, they moved the tree out of the road. That big oak, that little old river bend, that all got cut up and picked up and all dropped down the road.
So whatever you wanna do about those trees right now?
Drop them. I mean, once they're on the ground, we deal with it. I mean, if they're on the ground, Mr. Clark, they can't fall on your house.
It also has wooden, uh, wood fence between right there. Because it's quick. And since Harvey, that place has become a shabble.
But if we, if we get the trees on the ground. Right, that, that, that will fix it where you can go ahead and start building your house, right? I mean, it won't matter if they're laying there, because we already got a bunch laying there. I got pictures of them right now. I'm gonna show them. So what? Are we gonna vote? We're gonna have to get somebody to come to. Laura said we need insurance. I wouldn't, I wouldn't either. I mean, that, those are no worries. I mean, they're, they're all whites on one side.
This is, if I take personal responsibility for tree cutting, though, it's okay. I'll pick the company, y'all, whatever I need to.
Whether they're insured or not, and she's taking responsibility? I have a guy that works under me that doesn't have insurance, but he works under my insurance. I can't have any part of it because I'm on city council. Okay, so I can't use my insurance. But if he comes and cuts them, he'll lay them down an hour and a half, they'll be on.
I'll say, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. But, but the ditch will come later.
Thank you.
Okay, the ditch is gonna have to be probably a meter.
Okay, we'll move on now. We've got a presentation. Next one is the presentation by group of government.
So what are they talking about? Don't ask me. Uh, so.
Says Milton Fortilla, which are all breeds of these. That's why we, so make sure we know.
You will notice there are marked preliminary, which have a few changes, titles to correct. But the numbers haven't changed any. This is for September thirty, two thousand twenty-one, almost a year old. On page four, begins a section called Management Discussion and Analysis. I would urge you to read through that. It compares this year's activities to last year's, how your progress. The first financial statement is on page ten. This is a statement of that position. That's the middle of the page, total assets nine million, two hundred six thousand. Uh, a year before this, it's September thirty, two thousand twenty, it's eight million, one hundred seventy-nine. Assets have increased. Your liabilities a million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand. A year ago was a billion, rather a billion, eight hundred thousand. But your liabilities have increased some too. But the total net position, seven billion, two hundred thirty-one thousand, at the six billion, three hundred eighty-one thousand. So next page is Statement of Activities. This is income statement. And it's. You have. And it's short of that, expenses are first and then the expenses. Your total expenses a million, two hundred ten thousand, or your governmental activities. Five hundred eighty-six thousand for your water and sewer. Revenues from services, grants, and general revenues. Legal change in that position of four hundred thirty thousand for your governmental activities. And four hundred eight thousand for your, uh, water and sewer. The next page is the General Fund Balance Sheet. This is a little more detail for part of your first two pages. Home assets, one billion, one hundred forty-three thousand. Compared to prior year, six hundred sixty thousand. Liberties and deferred inflows, two hundred thirty-six thousand. A year before was sixty-six thousand. So your total fund balance, nine hundred, rather nine hundred eight thousand. And a year before was six hundred fifteen thousand. Page fourteen, this income statement for the general fund. Two hundred eighty-two thousand, revenues. Expenditures, four hundred forty-six thousand. And then you receive large grant funds, a million, three hundred sixty-two thousand. So your net change in the fund balance, two hundred ninety-two thousand. The page sixteen begins the water and sewer information. Total assets, seven million, two hundred six thousand, compared to, uh, the prior year's six million, eight hundred five thousand. Liberties, a million, seven, seven thousand. Year before, one billion, seven seventy-six, so they're pretty close. Total fund balance, five million, four hundred fifty thousand. The next page is the income statement for the water store fund. Resvenues, six hundred eighty thousand, compared to prior year, seven hundred twenty-five thousand. Expenses, five hundred thirty-three thousand, compared to four hundred thirty-eight thousand. And then grand revenues. Some interest expense, a little bit of interest income. The change in that position, that income, four hundred eight thousand. If you want to read. So page twenty-eight. Also your budget and actual preparedness. For the general fund, page twenty-nine, the water and sewer. Budgets and revenues, the fund, two hundred thirty-three thousand, actual, two hundred eighty-two thousand. Total expenses, your budget, two hundred fifteen thousand. Actual of four hundred forty-six thousand, which would be, has a lot of people. Budget. Budget is to be. In the west, good for eighteen thousand. Before the grants, they think of a loss. But the grants were used for that control. The next page is the water store fund budget, actual. Total operating revenues, budgeted, six hundred thirty-eight thousand. Actual, six hundred eighty thousand. Operating expenses, budgeted, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand. And the actual was six hundred eighty-two. There is one finding we found on page thirty-nine, which was a similar finding as prior year for, uh, filing the base selection form. And that'll get filed. Right away.
Clark, is this not the only one that's ever, uh, been settled up as far as yet?
So, uh, we've been working for years, several years.
Bunch of years. Got along there when I was getting up. And, and one question that I had was, a lot of times, you had to have a different set of eyes, odd shirt up, you know, than, than, you know, people looking over the same figure. I mean, I think we just went over these same figures. I mean, I think we just went over these same figures. Like, that's not. I mean, basically, you know, that's why.
Sure.
It's dry.
You're a lot of like. Rotate or change.
I mean, if you're explaining the single audit, what triggers that? If you're explaining that, if I were to ask you that.
Well, it has to do with federal grant fund. It's just, spend more than seven hundred, fifty thousand of federal funds. You're subject to, say, what they call a single audit. And it requires you to keep more records of what was spent in. All of the contract, all of the data for those expenses.
So, each program, each, each government department, it, it funds from, say, in the, or department, home, plan security. They all have their own set of rules, basically. And the single audit, that's what you call it, but it's really, it's dollars and cents, but it's more of a compliance audit. They are, the au- the auditor is. This is your financial statement audit. And on top of that, the single audit, they are looking for compliance. That the city followed all of the federal rules and guidelines for each of those different grants that you get shown. Uh, so, and since they're looking at the same numbers, but like Chuck said, there's a lot of rules on top, you know, that you have to follow. Uh, to comply with those grants, and that's what the single audit does. And there's a threshold, the seven hundred, fifty thousand. Once you hit that in expenditures, it triggers the single audit. So, and what's triggered all, basically, is the elevation rate. Uh, because it's, the grant itself is about five million. And it's over four phases. And each phase is about a million, a little over. So, as soon as you spend seven hundred, fifty thousand of that, it triggers an audit. But it does, but the seven hundred, fifty is all, all federal grants. Unguarded together.
Now that we've had that, around the elevations, then we'll have a single audit.
Yes.
I can. Another one.
We had one anyway.
We had one last year. Uh, you didn't have, uh, you haven't had one before that, uh, probably pre-Harvey. But a lot of these are, a lot of these are all from Harvey. You know, they, they're, the grant itself, what happened in Harvey, and so, um. But, and some of these were, were approved and, and available. Like in seventeen and eighteen, where you just didn't start doing them, and then it didn't rise to somewhere.
So, they also, when they check everything, they make sure all the lines and footboards got to be.
Yes.
No, they've got the count for every entity that they.
There is a material, they can't, no auditor can look at every thing. But they look at, they, they, each auditor assesses a small level of risk. And so, and that, that they, um, it's called a materiality threshold. And so, we, that there is a level of acceptance that something may slip through. But that, that is a very low percentage. So, and they do look more carefully at the grant, the grant dollars. Yes. But you can't look at it.
We had, we had a regular one. Last year.
You had, oh, you had a slow land. You'll have one for twenty twenty-two.
I'm sure where the thing, for all those things around, where the money's been in.
And I'm gonna show y'all something. Yeah, just. Come back.
Any other questions?
Is this, are you the grant administrator?
No.
Is that what you?
I'm the CPA.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a few corrections to make, some, uh. Tattoos or some corrections, but nothing that is, that will change. And we'll get that done right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can Charlotte explain something to me? Said that the audit, uh, they're not looking at the numbers, they're looking at your procedure on one of the audits? Yeah, but on one of the audits?
Yes.
So, in that procedure, when, uh, Mr. Emmons didn't use the money for the roads and sat on it thinking that we were gonna get a better deal. But we wound up losing because the price of material went way up. How does that fall in their procedures?
I, I, I'm not involved in that. I don't know. But this is grant money.
Yes. We receive money, we receive money for, from a grant to repair our roads.
And they.
But they didn't repair them, waiting to try and get more money. But in the meantime, we can't, the money that we had doesn't buy near the material it used to. Isn't that in the, is that in the procedures?
There is a, there is a grant period for each grant. And, and usually, it's set at the beginning of the application, but there's always. There's always the ability for the entity to ask for an extension, which is not unusual. The federal, the, the, the federal department has to accept, to approve the request for an extension. And I, and I don't know if that's what happened. I don't know what the, uh, I don't know on that particular grant, what the grant period is. I can find out for you.
No, I'm wondering if, if, if we, if we violated some rules on that.
Did he know what the grant is?
Wait, 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 that way I'll.
Oh, we were told the numbers, I don't recall what they were. Yeah. But now, now we can't get half the roads fixed that we were gonna get fixed.
Thank you, Charlie. No, I'm sorry, thank you, Charlie.
Uh, can I ask, can I ask another question? Barbara, what happened to my card where I got a chance to talk?
I don't, I didn't have a card.
I filled it out, put it up there.
And it's banned. Maybe got stuck on the, where's our?
I, I, I'd forgotten the two other meetings, too. Start to figure it out. I'm a troublemaker.
I'll put this number right down.
You'll have to fill out another one today.
There you go. Mine's not there?
It's in there.
Fill out two that way you'll be alright.
I never got to fill one up. I got it, I know, they'd already started, I don't wanna.
What was the answer on that? I don't have one up there?
Found, found me a card.
Don't worry about the citizens. What? Why, again, I've said it many a time, why does everything have to be a secret with y'all? If y'all don't want problems out of, out of the citizens, be honest with us. Tell us what you're doing. Don't do it and then tell us about it. See what we got to say about it to begin with. Just like this young gentleman said, y'all spending our money. And I'm sick and tired of all the shenanigans that y'all pulling off. And you can look at me all you want, because I'm sitting there saying that. Mr. Emmons, settling money, now it's not worth nowhere near what it was for our roads. We should have these roads fixed when we got the money. Don't sit on it, there's no reason to sit on it. It's a pipe dream that you're gonna get more. You have never given me the, uh, reports on the water that I've asked you for, and you, I, I'm talking. Alright? You've never given me the reports, and you sat here when you was at, on the council on this side, where Bud is, and you swore you was gonna give them to me that, that following week. I ain't never got them yet. How long has it been since you asked permission to put two meters on my place and you would let me know what the results were? Have you ever let me know one thing? No. Everything's gotta be a secret. Martha, I ran against you last time when you got elected. What have you done for Ward One? That's right. What have you done for Ward One?
I've been here five years, she's never contacted me.
That's right, she's never talked to me, and now she won't even talk to me when I've tried to get in touch with her. You're real cordial to me right here, but over there, you're not. And then you try to turn me in and get me in trouble for building a wall that was totally illegal. They didn't have nothing to stand against that I did something wrong building a wall inside of my store. But without you going over there and sipping around with them, nobody would've ever known. There wasn't no bad wall built. These two are the only two I see working up there. And they worked their tails off. The secrets, the secrets are not ever gonna get y'all anywhere. And this is why I push so hard for a forensic audit, not a local audit, not an insurance audit, a forensic audit. It would clear all y'all from any wrongdoing, but y'all are scared of that. You wanna spend money on every damn thing else, but you don't wanna spend the money on that forensic audit, 'cause it's gonna tell some truths. That y'all aren't gonna be happy with.
Charlie. Okay, just to, to full disclosure. Uh, my name is Charlie Hayes, I'm a shareholder. And, uh, and I'm. CPA firm in Omaha, and which have been involved with the city for, uh, probably over twenty years. Do the, they, they prepare the bills, we make process, we do the. We, uh, record comp base. We, uh, call, point it, and, um. So, you know, there's a lot of failures in here. What I'm going to try to do y'all today is, and hope you. The grants that the city has received, uh, whether they're still open, uh, or whether they're, they were plugged, you know, they're completed. Um, most, and these are, and we're gonna go back to, just right after Harvey. And, um, so. I want, I want y'all to see, I want y'all to know how the money has been spent and where it's been spent. So, um, after Harvey. Most of the grants, uh, that were approved were through the Texas Department of Emergency Management. Um, there were, there are, and this is, I am actually logged in to the Department of, uh, the Grants Section of, uh, the Department. And, um, for these grants, and there's, uh, there, there were seven accounts, and in that seven accounts, there are twenty projects. And, uh, if I pull this up. Okay, so, uh, if I look at all the projects, and I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm gonna give you a high level, please, because there's a lot of information. But each project, each of these are projects, that might help. Um, and these are the grant names. Uh, and actually, more, this is more than just Harvey, let me go back here, because it's, it's all the way. This, this is closed, you had four under eye. Let me, I'm gonna skip the perimeter. This one right here, Hurricane, Texas Hurricane Harvey. There are twelve projects. The federal government obligated, which means they were willing to provide two point seven million. For these twelve projects. Uh, if we look at the projects. Um. They are some, they are from right after Harvey, when they were re, they were reimbursing the city for emergency, uh, expenditures. Um, you'll see some of them are closed, some of them are open, and these are the twelve projects. In these twelve projects is the City Hall. They have obligated, there is an eligible amount, which is ninety percent, it's a ninety, ten percent grant. The federal government provides ninety percent, the city's to provide ten percent. There's this, there's the Civic Center and, um, City Hall. Okay? Um. There, uh, there were some emergency work on the list stations back in, uh, I think, two thousand and nineteen. Um, some of them are small, some of them are, you know. There are one, two, three, four, five, six open ones. This one actually is being closed. They were re, the city was reimbursed for the city buildings that they're currently occupied.
Okay, what, I can't even read that.
Well, you, you're just kinda. I, I can't, I didn't get any bicker, I, I'm up.
Nice to have a handout.
I didn't have time to get a handout, I'm sorry, my daughter had.
This is that, I'm gonna tell you.
Well, hold on. You can move on.
But it doesn't tell me.
Well, I, so, so these are all grants.
Right, I know that.
What you need to know is the type of a grant they are. These are called reimbursement grants. Which means the city has to spend the money, no, I'm sorry, the city has to incur the expense. And request the dollars to pay the invoices. So. So, if like on the, um, the, uh, city, this one right here, this eighty-three, six, seventy-eight. The city purchased the mobile home. And then they had to submit the invoice to get the money. They weren't a la, they didn't, they didn't advance them the money. All of these, all of this money, it is driven by what is called withdrawals or outlay reports. And, and the, the funds, the federal funds are. The city has to submit an outlay report. It will come from the engineer or, and/or, a grant administrator. All of these grants are being supervised by a grant administrator. It is someone that is a, usually it's an engineering firm, or it is a grant administration firm that the city contracts with. To assist them in managing the grants and making sure they comply with all those federal laws and, and rules. So that they don't get in trouble. Uh, they also will, they will also send reports. Uh, they also will, they will also send reports, they'll send the invoice or the outlay request to the city saying, if you look at the invoices, the approved, the payment, the mayor or the city captain, someone has to sign off on the outlay report, they send it to T E M, Texas Department of, uh, wherever their contact is, and then, and then T E M has to go through the process of approving the payment based on what the request, the request information that's sent. And then if they approve the reimbursement, then they will send the payment. Now realistically, realistically, you, the city is supposed to actually pay the invoice and then they'll get reimbursed. But in the real world, in all municipalities, I don't care if it's Dallas or Beverly Hills, the, the outlay, the, the requests for the funds go out before they give the funds. But as soon as those funds hit the bank, those invoices have to be uh, written and mailed. So the part of the rules is there, there's like a three day business window. So, so they already have the invoices, they request, they request the drawdown, they get the drawdown, they write the checks. And these, and if we look, if we were to look at one of the, hey, and I'll, I'll pull up some of them in a minute.
Now, did this go through council or John?
If this is, this, these were
Were they distributed or?
No, what do you mean?
They didn't go through the council?
Not with current, but they have proof.
Then, these, these grants have been approved, they, they were approved and provided to the city. Once the, once the grant administer, grant administrator is, um, contracted with
And who's that we have?
They, well, it, uh, it, it depends, there's a couple of Jeff Ward and associates, they, they, they are contracted for the, like the elevation grant.
Right.
In that, right?
Yeah, and he's, he's got to approve all that.
Yeah.
So, the other, the, the three buildings, raised and paid for them?
They got them.
Well, I know, it's the first that they can
Yeah, I'm gonna
So, I'm gonna give you, for example, the three buildings that they have raised on their property, that invoice was submitted and then went up.
No, I said most of these were. I said most of the grants, I'm, I'm gonna come through these, we're gonna go through each grant, just, just a minute.
I would give you an example.
The, the, the elevation grant is not through T E M. Okay, so it's not, it's through, uh, uh, the, uh, well, it might be actually through, maybe through FEMA, I can't remember if it's FEMA or T E M. There's a lot of, but
Well, before you went to this page, there was the other page, there's a
Yeah, I, yeah.
Three projects or five, or five projects that were, that were, that were, one of them, this dude, dude, he has thirty days, he's doing it.
Yes, hold on, let me go back. I just kinda wanted you to show what we look at and what we deal with to make sure that everybody's in compliance.
But we don't have that money, but that comes up, we have to
Right, I understand, that, I need that, I'll have it.
So this is
But my question is, right there, it says projects, five overdue.
Yes.
And one due in the next thirty days.
Yes, well, well, it's
When you look at these sheets, you just show the, those projects that show up.
Let's see, let's see. Okay, this is, um, let's see what it is. Sometimes the overdue is that some of these require quarterly, well, see, this is the City Hall. Well, this project really hasn't, it hasn't started to the point where the city hasn't been requested any firms for a City Hall.
Is that for the new City Hall or the old?
Well, this is, this is the grant, this was the grant that they, that was approved to replace the City Hall.
That was
It's a ninety percent, yes, but you see it says expended zero, because it's not, if the project is, it didn't get started.
So, what's the timeframe on that, or the, before they say grants come?
Well
See, that's, see, this is kind of misleading to public people. It doesn't help the beginning of the decade, so it might seem to be a conflict.
Now, I think they just recently extended some of the grants after the, the, uh, uh, they should like Harvey White out, they're pushing some of them out to twenty twenty-six.
Sometimes they actually extend it out, but, but see, see, these are all the quarterly reports that have been filed, probably just saying that this has been done, and let me see if I can find the, uh, actual
I think a question, maybe a lot of these people think, why do we need extensions on grants, why don't we just get a grant?
It's a, it's a paper form, I think, for them, they let you know.
Well, that's, that's part of it.
So, around twenty twenty-three, maybe?
That's part of it, but We were told at one meeting that it's, they're gonna rebuild the condemned City Hall.
Okay.
They wouldn't do it condemned, right.
Yes, this one, this one is on the light of this.
But that's
But it's, but again, even, sometimes projects just can't get started. All I'm telling you is, it's a project that's been approved.
My question was, the Harvey, she's out, she's out, ten or five years ago, they've filed a grant, where's where Harvey? We can't get nothing done in five years?
I have a city that's still working with I.
Are you gonna prove?
Yes, I know.
Several meetings ago, Barbara said that
So, on, on my
Okay, let me, let me go through my presentation, please. And then I will, and then I will answer any questions. I will try to answer any questions, but at least let me go through and present the information that I have for y'all, please. I wanted you to see what we deal with. Uh, and I don't have any control, all I have is the ability to view this. I don't, I don't participate in, even in, in, I don't have any participation in the project, other than I have the ability come here and see the status and see where the payments are and see where maybe they're coming in. So, um, the grant administrator does a lot of that, and it's, I think, separated us those quarterly reports, but, okay, so, since Harvey, since Harvey, you, we, you have, the, the T E M has provided those, those twelve twelve projects. And this is a report directly from the, the website. It tells you what funds have been received and on which projects. Most of these were, these smaller ones that have already been completed, they were, I would imagine these, the first four were like right after Harvey, when they were having to do your emergency road repair or electricity repair, they, the city incurred the expense and, um, they were able to, this mer, this last one, this emergency protective, that was right after Harvey.
Office building, there's the double Y.
Uh, that's the double Y, yes, that's the double Y. And there was some road work done right after Harvey that had the funds were provided. But you have to remember, all of these were only for the, the payments and the deposits that they received were only approved after they saw invoices. There was not any advance, money's provided. Um, so the next grant, the next grant that was related to Harvey was the buyout grant. And I'm gonna blow this up so that I can make this new project. The buyout grant was to purchase uh, four or five homes after Harvey, because they had flooded too many times. This is the actual detail for the bank. There's a separate bank account for the buyout. And this, uh, the first funds for the buyout grant were back in seventeen. Um, and, um, so in this, for this grant, they received the deposits for seven hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. And that's what they spent to buy the houses. Texas title was, you know, closer, there were some, Jeffrey Ward was the administrator on that grant. So they get paid out of the grant. The city put in fifty dollars to open the bank account, and that's where they ended. And this, this grant spans from twenty seventeen to January twenty nineteen. Okay. I promise, I'll answer questions, I just wanted to get y'all, give y'all a picture. Okay, um, the next set of grants are down the water side. And they are, um, from the, um, Texas Water Development Board. And each grant, there were three, um, each project was five hundred thousand dollars, that was the max, regardless of what grant, what the project cost, they were giving them five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, one of them was the list station. One of them was the water plant, sanitary sewer. Two of these projects are complete. And one is still in progress. Um, this, uh, and this is just the, the contract, the Texas Water Development Board. Okay. So, just the way that we track the expenditures, uh, L J A Engineering were the engineering company that oversaw the project. Basically ass, acting as grant administrator and the project manager. M K Constructors, they were the actual contractors. The expenditures for this project that went from March twenty nineteen pleaded October twenty-fifth, twenty-one, four hundred ninety-two dollars, one hundred seventy-nine cents. So, as, as, and you see where it says like pay requests, pay requests, estimate number seven. Those are the, uh, those are the reimbursement requests or the outlay, called outlay reports. So, uh, the engineer, uh, gets the invoices from M K Constructions. He prepares the outlay report, it's usually one, two, three, four, however many outlay reports they need. The longer the project, the more outlays you have. But each outlay is a request for information, I mean, for money, to pay those invoices that have come in. So, and, and lots, and then you, you know, the, the deposits are timed pretty close to a set of invoices. But, so, and, and these funds, the five, the five hundred thousand, the one point five million, they, they were, it was, it went from the Texas Water Development Board into a bank account at Zion First National Bank in Escrow. The, the money didn't come to the city, it sat in three different accounts at the Zion's bank. And they, they, they made the deposit request, uh, they, they sent deposits by wire. They went directly into a bank, into the, uh, city's bank, uh, as the requests were provided. And you will see, the, these are the, from December twenty eighteen, where they gave them five, they gave each project five thousand dollars to do, kinda like for admin startups. And then the rest of them were based on, uh, outlay reports. The, the total money, the total deposits were four ninety-three, three ninety-three, twenty-one. Now, in this, in this account at Zion First National Bank, there is still six thousand thirty-three dollars. I don't know what the Texas Water Development Board's gonna do with that. They may take it back, because this project is complete. Or they may decide to let the city have the six thousand thirty-three.
I have to leave and I'm sorry to interrupt, anywhere where we could get this information to all of us instead of on the Excel sheet?
I, 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 council.
Can we have like an open portal for everybody for all the citizens of the city?
Yes.
Can we see all this at any time?
Well, this is
Just put it on the website.
We can maybe put like a report on the website, I mean, like an open report for each grant.
This, this exact information, that'd be great.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll try to, uh, I'll try to use them and if, maybe they can
If the, if the grant should close. If it's closed.
If it's closed, okay, well, on the closed ones will work out where we can put a detail.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so, you still have six thousand, I don't know what's gonna happen with that. Uh, this one, let me see. This one, this project is also closed. Uh, this one, I'm not sure what one it is, but these are the expenditures, again, uh, yeah, all three of these were at the beginning of, of, um, March of twenty nineteen. We, uh, we spent four hundred ninety-two, oh, I can see the same one. Sorry, that's, that's, sorry, oh, this is the other, this is, uh, this one actually went over budget. Which one ended up costing more, I'm looking at that. They, but it actually, it actually went way over, but they still only got five hundred thousand dollars. The, the, the five hundred dollar difference is a bond fee, it's like an administrative fee to the bank. But, again, these were all, all of these deposits and, and, uh, were requests for, uh, a deposit to pay bills. The other one, the other one, this one is actually still in progress, this is the the list station is still in progress. Um, these are the deposits that have been, these are the, uh, dollars that have been requested and deposited into the bank, two hundred seventy-seven thousand, so there's probably an invoice we haven't paid. These are all the invoices and check, and bills that we paid in the bank, in, in Escrow, there is still two hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars sitting in the bank waiting for them to finish the project. So the I, I remember when they were below So this is, is still in progress, again, the five hundred thousand, the five hundred dollars is a bond, is a fee. So we have, so we have three Texas Water Development Board grants, two of them are complete. One was in budget, one was out of budget, this one is still in progress. And as they completed, they will, they will, see, we're, we're actually on outlay number seven back in March. This would be in outlay eight, this is probably outlay nine. Um, and they all, all those funds get wired directly to the, uh, specific grant account. And, uh, then the checks were written out. Okay. So, so we have twelve Harvey projects, we have the buyout project, we have the three Texas Water Development projects, and then the next one And then the next one is the elevation grant. Okay. Okay. So this one, let me blow it up. Okay. So, again, you, um, this, this, the, the full amount of the grant is close to five million. And it, it, this is, the beginning of this grant, they gave this, this was given to the city at the very beginning. It wasn't a request. It wasn't a, a drawdown. It was like, here's your first phase, phase one, you have one point two million. And it, and it was around June twenty-nine, twenty-one. And then they started the pro, they started the first round of, um, elevations. Architectural Development is the one, is the contractor. Um, JSWA, which is, uh, Jeffrey Ward and Associates, they're the grant administrator. So, um, and they didn't pay a grant, uh, uh, administrative fee right out of the grant for their work. So, from.
They got all of their money up front?
No, no. They did it in phase, everybody gets phase as each prop, you know, it's a, there's, each one of these have like a phase one, a phase two, a phase three within that phase one. So, um, I'm sorry. Uh, so by February of this year, they, they, right before that, in January, we were, we had pretty much spent that one point two million. We had ten thousand dollars left. Uh, and this probably, this, 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 uh, this invoice here probably was the ten thousand. That was probably his final payment for the first phase. Then they started working on second phase. Uh, same, uh, but these were, from this point forward, they were, um, they received the deposits uh, either on request or just in, um, upon approval. I, I, they didn't get all of it at once for this, the second round. But we're currently on the second round. So they're in, they're in the first phase on these properties. So, we still owe this, of these dollars, um, it's a little over a million, we still have in the bank right now, nine hundred four dollars for mortgages until they go to the next phase. So this, this particular grant is a little bit different from all the other grants because it's not exactly driven on reimbursement. But we still have to track every invoice.
Do we know if all that money will be spent on elevating homes? I'm not sure.
I would imagine so. Because what they had to do was provide a, uh, a plan and a bid for each house. And so, there's pretty much like one, two, there's about five or six houses. So that, that amount that they gave was based on the projected contract amount for each of those houses. They're not, they didn't give them any more. So, when we, when, 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 when the city gets through with this phase, we should end up pretty much like we did at the end of the first phase. We spent it all. And then they'll pick, I guess, I don't know if y'all have all the houses. Do you have all the houses, like for the whole country? Oh, the whole, uh, okay. So they'll pick another batch. They'll pick the, the third batch of homes. And then we'll go through the same process. Jeff Ward, yeah. So.
Cheryl, what is your notation of mobilization? What is it? That'll stay on the, the other.
Uh, that was just, um, that was, this is information that we pick up from the invoice.
Mobilizations, usually moving equipment.
Probably like putting like the material, something like they're mobilizing, they're going to that site. They're putting out all of the equipment and. Yeah, that's, that's the mobilization phase. We're getting ready to start the actual elevation. So I think there's three or four phases in each house. And they're paying, and, uh, Architectural is paying by their phase. So they, you know, they need their money to go to the next step. And then Jeffrey Ward gets, uh, he gets to request, I mean, he gets to request a payment as those phases are completed. So, there is a budget and a timeline for, for each one, for both Jeffrey Ward and Architectural that they, they can get paid before they complete this, you know, this step or this percentage. So, uh, there are still two more phases, uh, you know, because we're right about halfway through the month.
Well, the fourth phase is when they, their last one, the third one, um.
Okay.
The start of the, my final survey, it's a, it's explained again, there's quick surveys. We still wonder if they're finally trying to sort of, and some of them.
And you go for the whole group, over the whole property, party. But I mean, there's, y'all are halfway through the grant funds. So I would anticipate that this one might actually, uh, it may actually even go to the beginning of twenty-four, but it, but they took these houses pretty quick. So it may, the rest of that grant may be, uh, in, leaving in twenty-three. Of course, it'll span two of your years because y'all's fiscal years in the middle. They're not. Okay. So, but that's, that's the, that is the elevation grant. Okay. And then y'all are asking about the road grant. Now, this one is pretty new to me. Uh, it is a two billion dollar grant from what I understand. Um, um, well, it's just started. And again, this one is re, they're only, they only received the grant money upon reg, on that, you know, for reimbursement. So, these are like planning, the Public Management Inc. is the contractor. And LJA Engineering is the project manager, grant administrator. So, this one comes from Texas, uh, I don't think it's T E M. I'm not sure which federal group it is, but the money is coming from the Texas Comptroller. So it's probably not T E M, which is the Texas Department of. It might be. GLO, that's right. I'm sorry. Yes. It's GLO, General Land Office. Uh, General Land Office. That is a state, that is a state, um, agency. But they get their money federally and then they're passing it down. Um, so it's still federal, it's still considered federal money even though it's coming from a state agency.
That's saying it's gone out of the, that public management corporate, they're the ones that got all the money.
Okay. I, I, I just know that y'all have earned a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and you've requested the funds. And you see, I'm sorry. This first one got deposited into your account on December sixteenth and you wrote the check on December sixteenth. So it's a, it, it has to be pretty close to an A M N amount. Or you're not following federal guidelines. But this one is just starting. I don't know where you're at on it, but that's what, that's the progress we've made on it.
LJA likes this, like, so they send, they send, they send this, you know, because it actually made the stimulus that.
Right. Okay. So, you have gotten two other grants from, uh, from COVID. Uh, one was a little, very small, um, grant. I don't, and it was probably for, you know, mask and sanitizer, I don't know. They approved that thirteen thousand, but they only paid seventy-seven, seventy-one. That one is closed. It's, you know, it was just like a one-time grant.
For that one? What was it for?
Went in the general fund. And these were receipts, these were receipts that, uh, that the city had to send in receipts. And I, and I guess some of the receipts didn't get, didn't rise to their, whatever the parameters are. So they only approved seventy-seven, almost seventy-eight hundred dollars when the city actually spent thirteen thousand during that time period. Okay. So, uh, some of these, this one is basically just your federal government given out money. That's my, that's my commentary on it.
What'd she talk to me about, right?
This is the twenty twenty-one coro, coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. And almost every city or entity saw some money. You didn't have to, these, this, these, these have not been spent. We don't, um, we have received a hundred and fifty-one thousand and we have received two hundred and one hundred dollars. This one, uh, this one, but it's coming through T E M. So it was on that website, that, that first website. And, um, it's been obligated and it's sitting in there payable. I don't think we've gotten it yet. Uh, so let it show up pretty soon.
Where is that?
It's, it's in the bank. Well, this, this. Yeah, it's, it's in, uh, you have a grant. If you look on your, uh, if you look on your balance sheet, in the, there's a grant like accounts are needed to dash through. And I think it has more than, I think it has some residual dollars in it. So I think it might be like one ninety-one. But that's where this money is at. It's sitting there. Now, the cit, you can only use this three hundred and four on infrastructure. It, it's pretty, it's, you can't use it for operations. You can't use it for payroll. You can't use it for facilities. It has to be some type of infrastructure. Roads, uh, bartering rooms, uh, lift, you know. And it can't be used in conjunction with another grant. You can't like.
And have you moved, removed that tree, power line runways?
Uh, maybe. 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 Uh, I don't know that the city has really decided what, what, what they're gonna use it for. Uh, because there, it wasn't, there wasn't a project in mind. It was just like, and actually I think a grant administrator like applied, did the application or I might have drew it in. I mean, it wasn't, it, I mean, literally, it was like, you fill out this form and the city will get this money. And that's every city, every county, every.
So infrastructure would be that, uh, the, uh, fire department, the condemned fire department.
Could be.
To rebuild the condemned.
Could, could be. It's, it's, it's pretty new. I mean, we just thought, I mean, we just got the first one in August. So really, you know. Well, I mean, I'm sorry, it was last year. So, I mean, it, but it's, and I don't know, maybe it's, I mean, it could have been used for the city hall and the community. So, oh, no, no, but you have another grant. So, you know, I don't know what the problem is on that. I don't, I don't know. Uh, okay. So, so that, those are, those are all of the grants that the city has received, completed, still have, uh, since Harvey. And I really want y'all to understand that this is not money that just sit, you know, some of it we still have. So, uh, but there was always, every time you got money, it had to go out. It had to go out. It was already earmarked for an invoice. We knew the amount. A lot of times the outlay is the same amount as the invoices we're paying. There's no, they don't round it. They say they did three invoices for, you know, four hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-six cents. That's what you're gonna get and they expect you to pay it out. So, and, and that's, that's, that's what we do. We come in, uh.
I think all that's great. Try to get the money and pay it out. Okay. I think what really what the city council, what the citizens wanna know is how much money's left over.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's, let me, I will do this. Uh, y'all have, y'all, y'all look. I don't want to look at your, in your financials card today. Okay. Let's see. Um, um, so it's hard if you're monthly me. Okay. Well, let's, let me do this. I want y'all to know, I, I want y'all to know because my responsibility is to make sure that all the dollars are accounted for. And I have a professional and ethical obligation to do my job.
We've been sharing all this information.
So, I, I, you know, I don't, I want it, you know, I want y'all to have, uh.
It's all right. You've got the money and you spend it.
I'm gonna, I'm showing you. I can't find your financial.
Well, I'm glad y'all know because I don't.
Well, you, you get, no, you, you get a financial statement every month in your packet.
And you read it.
And you read it. And there is, all your bank accounts are listed on there with the balance every month.
But we don't know if it's, there's no way that I can know if it's restricted or not restricted.
If it's grants, it's restricted.
Well, that's what you're saying is that's restricted money and.
Well, you can't use it. No, you can't. And I'm gonna.
So then I don't.
Oh, well, well, if it's grant money, it's restricted. Period.
I mean, that's what I, we just wanna know what we spend.
If there's a resolution that.
Okay. And then I'm gonna circle back around about that. I, but I will show you this. You'll just bear with me and. Nobody number. Also, uh, no one else, well, we maintain your books and records. City doesn't pay cash. Most everything is from, is online, uh, or if someone does come in and pay with a check, it's remote. It's put through a check reader that day. And, uh, so no, no funds are kept in the office. And we reconcile the bank. Um, this is basically what, uh, what, so what they're looking at, what this council is looking at tonight in their packet is the, through July. Okay. This is, uh, public work. This is, uh, public works. This is your operating fund. This is customer deposit, that is a restricted account. Uh, that is to cover all of the customer deposits, which is, which are a liability, a liability to the, uh, because you can get those deposits back. So, debt service, this is, this is, this account is the, uh, this is the account that the city is building to, with the user, with the excess user fee monies to get it to one year's worth of, of debt service. Paying the debt. The annual debt service is about a hundred and thirty-three thousand on the bond line, which is uh, one point four billion. And so, we are, the user fee, pay, the user fee on your water bill is restricted to be own, used only for this bond. And any excess that may occur at the end of the year, we are, we are building it, we're, we're putting, well, we need to build, we need to, I need to transfer some money because this, this account is actually, what you have now for debt service is almost, uh, is a little over eighty thousand. So we just haven't transferred money from the operating in there. But we're trying to build that to about a hundred and thirty-three thousand. And that will be the emergency fund for, uh, in the event that you have a disaster and you can't pay your, your debt for that year, or you have the money that buys you another year. Uh, that is, it's not, it is restricted because council, it's actually what's called committed. But uh, it is, you can't, we can't use that money for anything else. We can't use a user fee for anything else. The hope is that connections build up enough to where, uh, we get this done and we can, uh, look at lower the user fee at some point. If, the more connections you have, the less the user fee has to be because it's covering that hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars every year pay off the debt. So, right now, there is a little bit of excess, it's like about ten thousand dollars. And that, you know, it fluctuates depending upon who's here or you're not, uh, but that money is going into that account. And it's gonna go in there, it's gonna go in there. And then once we reach the one-third of three, then we can look at where the city is at and maybe, you know, do some things. Because you also have, you also have a loan that is about, that'll be paid off in two years. And we might be able to, uh, move that money for the bond and like get, get some relief, some small relief on the user fee. This insurance money, this is another account. This is, this insurance money is the insurance money from Harvey. From the, and the council wants, their decision was to save those funds for the ten percent what, what was gonna be the ten percent, uh, share, local share of the city, the city hall and civic center. So, that, those, those grants aren't, those are a nine-ten. So, so they didn't wanna spend this money on something else because the potential was, potentially is they're gonna need it for the rebuild. And so it's, it is, it's in a account, it's, it's earning interest and it's not being used until they, you know, until the decision on the civic center and the city hall. This is a grant fund. This is that, this is, uh, this is one of the grant, one of the five hundred thousand dollar grants. Uh, that's that account. This is restricted. We can only use it for the grant. This one right here, this allegiance grant, uh, uh, this is, um, this is the first part of that, uh, coronavirus grant. And it's, and it's there waiting for council to determine what they can spend it on. Uh, this lift station is again one of the, this is residual monies from the two, uh, the, uh, two five hundred thousand, uh, and then this is the other one. And, you know, it says it's only got twenty dollars in it, and that's because it's an in and an out, an in and an out. You get the money, we write the check. You get the money, we write the check. Uh, but whatever is in this money, whatever is in this account is restricted. Yeah, but I mean, at some point you could have like three hundred thousand dollars. It just, it's an in and an out. So hopefully it never got very much, but we write the check.
Surely, now, being that it's restricted because it's a grant, can it be transferred to other?
No.
Yes, it's safe.
No. And that's what, you know, when I was, when we were talking, we were looking at the, uh, we were looking at that five hundred thousand dollar grant that had six thousand dollars left and it's complete. You can't, I mean, you can't request that money if you have the money. If you had the whole five thousand and you had that six thousand dollars left, you'd have to go text Warren Bell and go and say, hey, can we have that money?
Right.
Or, and then they say, well, you have different projects that you can be from. And a lot of times that's what happens, they'll let you be from something else. Or you have to return it. But most of the time, they let you use it on something else. Uh, this tech school, general operating, that's like the state ones are doing. Uh, it, it's in, tech school is a state-run, uh, kinda like investment. And a lot of cities and, uh, uh, it's an investment fund. And it's, it's more like a CD and there's no risk. It's, it's earns interest, it's only earns five hundred. But it's, it's a safe way to say. So, so this is unrestricted. It's three hundred and fifty. It's just that the council kinda wants to hold on to it for a certain purpose. Uh, operating is from your operations. And restricted, restricted, unrestricted, restrictive, restrictive, restricted, unrestricted.
So what you're saying is there's no possible way that I could possibly know how much money is actually available?
Yeah, you got five, you had five hundred and eighteen.
I did, I don't know which ones are restricted. You just went down there and marked them.
Okay.
And I marked it.
Well, okay, so this is what I'm gonna do. I don't know if I did it in, let me pull up the other one and I'll show you. Cause.
I believe you that some are restricted and non-restricted, but I don't have, have any way that I could possibly know this.
Okay, well, let me, let me see, 'cause I think in the, uh, I'll do this in the, I think I did it on Yalsman. Uh, let me see, uh, I, uh, we pull up, we keep two separate open files for the general fund and the water fund. This is the general fund. Uh, and I will do this. Uh, you see, uh, but, but if you look on the, uh, in the financial statements on page, um. I'm sorry, I am on. But I'm trying, uh, but you'll go to page ten?
I'll say that.
That's a real.
Yeah, everyone.
He's got the same one right here.
Everyone.
What the hell am I looking at? Oh, no, we just watched the Roman for public work again. Okay, I can do it on this computer. I did that at my office, so I'm gonna do it on your. I gotta go with, actually, actually, if I were to go across the street and look and get into the computer over there, you would see.
Yeah, I'll get that on tape.
Uh, uh, there's this non-current assets on the balance sheet. It says cash and cash equivalents restricted. Well, that's restricted, so.
Charlotte, I'm not gonna be able to.
Okay. I promise you, but on the next, on, uh, on August, what you're gonna see, no, 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 what you're gonna see is you're gonna see a section of bank accounts. And it's gonna be called unrestricted. And, and I'm gonna group them. And then, uh, and then you'll see a stack, and there'll be another subset that's called restricted. And I'm gonna put all the restricted in there, okay? So that. I don't know why we didn't do that.
Well, the resolutions that you passed three years ago, they put the rest of our accounts under restricted.
No, they're not restricted. They're committed. Well, it should say, you can't, you can't, a city can't restrict. Uh. Jerry, it's gonna be in the restricted here. It is gonna say restricted.
Okay, so.
Okay, okay, okay. Anyway, okay, so now we're in the, uh, this is the, this is the, this is the city side. Um, um, this is wrong. Oh, wait, okay. Okay, so the city side has sixty-two thousand dollars in its checking. It has a little savings account of forty-seven thousand dollars. The road fund is restricted. No, no, yes, this is restricted, but it's not a grant. That is residual user fees from, I don't even know way back when that, that. Okay, there was a user fee at one point that was for roads. And.
And it's restricted, but it's just restricted for roads.
Yes.
That's good.
And you know that sixty thousand that we, uh, budgeted, we put in the budget, it's gonna come out of that. Okay, and that's why, and I made it, it's not just that we, this community development is just a little account, it's not restricted. Grants is restricted, um. I'm not quite sure which one this one is. It's restricted. This is the insurance that the city side received. The city, the city, city received for city hall and the contents, same thing. Council wants, or made of, they, uh, have a reservation that they wanted to hold these funds for the year, for the future rebuild. So, that's restricted. And then this is the elevation grant, like in July. It, we've just received, uh, these, these funds and we had it. But if we look at it as a, like here today, we have, there's that nine hundred and four thousand that I showed y'all earlier. That's kinda where we're at. This road grant, this road grant is that new grant, the road, the two, the whatever it is, one, what something. And it, it has five dollars in it, but, cause we, because we receive money and then we wrote checks. Then we have some interest. So those are the accounts that are on the city. Unrestricted, unrestricted, restricted, unrestricted, restricted, assigned, restricted, restricted. So then they were, you know, and so when you're looking at fund balance, you see down right here, well, this is like your, this is your assets plus your liabilities, this section. And so, restricted for road money, that's, well, this is, these are adjusted at the end of the year. So this one, this one fifty-two actually is at the end of September. It'll be whatever this, whatever this amount is in the bank. So, restricted.
Uh, when we talked about our question on Tuesday, we talked about franchise.
Yes. Do you have?
Your franchise.
Probably, now, if, if, you can, you can, you can like say, hey, Charlotte, or, or y'all can decide, hey, do you want the franchise being the positive into the road fund? Without having any like revolution? Now, the problem is that one sixty is restricted.
Quite exactly.
But, um, but if you wanted it, you wanted it to be only for roads, you would need to pass a reservation.
I mean, you would hope to pull up that font.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, uh, in the past, when y'all had, uh, some minor, when y'all had minor, uh, road repairs, um, a lot of times that was paid out of the general fund. It wasn't paid out of that one that restricted, I mean, all. So technically, you probably don't have that much left because really the, the road, that money should have gone from restricted into the operating. But, I mean, you know, but if you have some, you know, if you, yes. Hopefully that one point something million will take care of all roads. Those, okay.
Now, that was, well, that was the initial.
Okay, well, uh, so, I, I, I think I'd be, I, I, I want y'all to be comfortable. So, I, I went over the grants that y'all incurred or still have outstanding. I tried to show you what's been paid and what's been received. Tried to explain how it works.
Quick question.
We've looked at the, what is balances?
If we put the balance sheet on the website or we add, add regular.
Yeah, ac- yeah, actually, so some, uh, some cities do that, yeah.
And I think it would help with our.
It's just, you know, it's, a lot of times it comes about down to.
But we need to get it from down in. Restricted.
Yeah, I'll do that on the next one, I mean, the next one. You see how it says checking and savings?
There you go, it's fine.
Okay. And there's definitely one that says restricted.
Dedicated. Sorry, you gotta do, like, try each one out.
These are all.
I can't do that, it's simple.
These are all.
Come and see.
No, no. Uh, well, it'll look like this. Oh, this is just, these are not the bank account. Yeah, no, no, those are just like the. So you can get in the information.
So I think if we can put this information along the line, we'll.
Let me ask you one.
You can actually even put like, uh, you can actually even put, uh, like you can have. You know, this is through July and, uh, you know, we give a budget, you know, we had our budget workshop on Tuesday and and, uh, what we can do?
Oh, my question is, on the, on the two insurance, you have one in operations, you have one in.
Well, the, the, uh, the general, so, the, uh.
Oh, no, but.
Yeah, hold on.
But one of us two hundred and sixty dollars.
Why have this health insurance? Okay, so, so, um, so this one is just not coded to whichever one it's being. This one, okay, so this one is your dual liability and. Oh, whoa, 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 I'm sorry. You're, you're saying it's.
We said that those are both unrestricted.
Well, there, there, uh, there was a resolution at some point, I guess, to say, hey, we're gonna use that for, for the local share of the grants, yeah.
Right, but, but we do, but we can't.
You can un. Yes, yeah. So, um, so you can't un, you can't unrestrict the roads, okay? You can't unrestrict the. You can't unrestrict the grains, but you can unrestrict the insurance, yes, on both sides.
If the city council saw a client, like, they wanna take that insurance money to start the end of water department fund, the three hundred and fifty thousand.
On the other side.
They could actually apply that to property or to the bill you can be relieved, right?
Um, yeah, and don't know that.
That'd get rid of that two-year, uh, that, that would help the citizens.
They could actually take a word to that, use it for that.
Yeah. Well. There are.
Three thousand dollar trailer that's normally open three days a week. I mean, we, if we can't stand, if we can't have the.
Yeah, you do have all, well, it's gonna be that one, you have all. Any, any questions? Cause I'm about done.
The reason why I was gonna change, Charlotte, is that.
But it's just that we need to get banks filled that way, so people would know when it's on. No, no, no.
So that's insurance money collected after the song. Now, two nights ago, Charlotte said we had about six hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like six, ten.
And this time looking in a billion something. That's why I'm saying we gotta be able to sort out what's restricted, what's not restricted.
Oh, yeah, you know.
Got six hundred thousand.
Yeah, and you know, when you were, Chuck was saying in your net. Your net position was like, he was saying your net position was seven point two million.
That's, that's stuff we can't.
Well, I, well, that's what I was about to say, you know, five point two, that is a fixation. Yeah.
That's what we need.
So we're trying to look at, we're gonna look at, send in for, uh, that, well, actually council, cause I actually fix, if you go on your quick books in your office, I already did that. It's just that I was working off one I had in my office. So that would be something that would be making it much more clearer. And then we'll get with, we'll get with Sabrina about how to get these onto, uh. Uh, yeah, but you only want really two, you want the budget, the actual and the balance sheet. Right, so you end up with four, you know, you'll end up with four reports because two are lar and two are. Uh, general fund, okay, so we will do that. And I'll work on, uh, some type of progress report on the grants that they can post on the website too.
Thank you.
Might not be as detailed, but, but at least something that, hey, this is what they spent, this is what they got. This was closed, this was.
City of turns and everything.
Sure, I, I've requested that, so I'm gonna request a report card from you. I did that.
The citizens need.
So, so I'm gonna quit, uh, I don't, I think they want me to talk about one thing, but then, but I, I, we're in Beaumont, I'm in Beaumont. I'm on French Road right there before on Neco. Well, no, by, uh, by. I will answer questions. You know, I have to like, you know, if somebody asks me a question, I've gotta let them know, but I mean, I don't, I will answer questions. This is all, this is public, I mean, your money.
Thank you for all the information.
That's what we used to.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Okay, so, uh, so.
We used to think it was all money.
No, it's all for management, so they can explain, and what is the disaster loan, and the second is the.
Okay.
To make sure we're good and.
Okay, so can I be, so like, see how y'all have worked? Okay. Okay, so they want me to talk to you about the submitting a community disaster loan application for an amount not to exceed the forgivable amount calculated by FEMA. Okay, so what this is, is back after Harvey. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the oper, one of the things that were available through, uh, I think this is through. Well, it's through FEMA, but I think it's a community group, it's a third department, but anyway, it was a loans. It was a loan. And, uh, at that point in time, uh, the, uh, council, um, applied for it. Um, the, uh, the amount that was calculated, that was available, was about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. It had to be, it was like an emergency fund, so it had to be used for, uh, uh, operations. Payroll, utilities, couldn't use it for infrastructure, which is unusual. Uh, but, um, it was, but there, the, it was the type of loan that could be potentially forgiven. It becomes a grant. Uh, the, uh, the, the parameters to determine how much, if any, of the loan would be forgiven was, uh, was a determination of recovery over three years, the next three years. So. And you couldn't, uh, you couldn't re, you couldn't recover. Uh, if you recover too quickly, then the loan was not gonna be forgivable. Okay, so, um, so a couple of months ago, maybe, I wanted to go, it was probably July, June of July. Uh, FEMA contacted, uh, the city and, and I was included in the conversations. And they, uh, we sent them all, we sent them basically financial statements and, um, backlogs. And they determined that if the, uh, if the city still wanted to, uh, take out the loan. Um, that the forgivable amount would only be about a hundred and forty thousand. They, nobody, I mean, we, the decision to, to decide what to do, they decided, because FEMA is like, it's a dead line. The city could still apply and take out the whole one hundred and ninety-one thousand, but only up to a hundred and forty would be forgivable. Um, so, you know, our.
Potentially.
No, no, it, no, no, you, it, they are, FEMA's already, FEMA's already gone through their conversations, they've got their, they've put their blessing on it. And they said, as long as you spend it for what you can spend it on, after you provide them all the documentation, then the loan will become a grant. It's, it's, it will become a reimbursable grant, just like all of these other grants.
Just like I said, potentially.
Yes, but, but they're, you know, they've told us everything, they've told us, uh, you know, he gave me a whole list of what we could spend it on. Payroll, utilities, uh, you know, maintenance. You can, you can use operations, can't spend it on grants. Cross the city.
So we could have a life bill through.
Yes, yes, and so my thought, my thought was that if you wanted to do the loan, you only do it up to just under the.
Forgivable.
The forgivable part, you know, if it was like a hundred and forty-one thousand, just say, okay, you want a hundred and forty. Um, and. Uh, just using, you know, minimal like payroll and, and some other things, it would probably take three to six months to spend that much money. And then. Man, sorry.
As it, it's a loan, so it's.
Well, there's no, interest doesn't build until they say, if, if they don't forgive it, then then it starts, okay? But, um, I mean, the city can, the city can ex, they, they can, they can apply for whatever amount they want, up to the max, which was the one ninety-one. The FEMA, FEMA has, has calculated the forgivable part to be about a hundred and forty-one thousand. They told us what you could use it for, and the forgiveness comes at the end, when you provide the documentation for the amount of the loan.
So if you spent it on utilities for the compensation, you could redirect the money that you had for utilities back to roads.
Right.
Or the same.
Right, and that's what, that was a question, that was a question in some, one, a couple of our meetings was, well, you know, can we use it on roads? No.
Right.
But then I was saying, but you pay your operating expense and that money that you didn't need, you used it for something else. So you're accomplishing this thing for.
Going around that.
You just have to follow.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about with that.
So, of, of what you can spend it on.
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm telling Bud now, I'm concerned about those two large, I think they were three hundred something thousand dollars that you could use at your discretion. I don't wanna see y'all go out and, and, uh, try to borrow money to redo, redo the civic center when you got that money sitting there. I just, I'm trying to put, put it out on the table, that's all I'm doing.
So that's the loan, there's, uh, everybody know door gun payment, cause then y'all got the loan, so that's the loan, that's, that is the loan, it's forgivable.
To the water, the water plant was, uh, half a million dollars, basically, but it's forgivable once we spent the money, so it's basically the same, right?
Yeah, kind, and there's water.
There's money on.
They're not gonna let you, they're not gonna, it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's like, okay, you can. It's like the PPG loan that was all everybody got, well, it was a loan, but it's forgivable. I can like do an estimate, I mean. I think I can go back to it. I mean, I don't know what, if you talk to. Cause everybody really like wants to get this closed, so it's either you, you, you can turn it down, you don't have to take it, and that's, you know, that's, that's fine, but you. The thing is, you've applied for it, they, they accepted your application, uh, but they, but the city basically waited for three years.
How long ago was this applied for?
Oh, back.
Three years ago. So three years ago?
Yeah, so, but see. Uh, I think, uh, right after FEMA, no, right after Harvey, uh, back then they had applied for it. But they, the council didn't want to take out the loan. It's just, that loan has been sitting there. And they wanted to see what the recovery was over the time frame, because if you, like I said, if you recover too quickly, then it wasn't gonna be forgiven.
The people were excited, then I was looking at, talking about three years.
Yes, yes, and so y'all had two years of loss, and then, this, so you had, you had a really huge loss in, in twenty seventeen, cause of Harvey. You had a small loss in twenty eighteen, and then you had income in twenty nineteen, and so what they basically did is rolled those all together, and that's where they got the one forty-one. Okay.
So you could do something, someone to.
Uh, D I G L, yeah, yeah, they made two thousand dollars.
Okay, so let's get a hundred and forty.
I, 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 well, that's all, but I'm serious.
I got a little question for y'all, if we get all these grants, how come we hadn't rebuilt our own sewer station? How come we haven't rebuilt our sewer plant?
Cause it would cost about five or six million dollars to build.
There's not a grant out there for that?
And now, you know.
You're asking me, sorry. You have to spend the money before you get the. I think it was five million.
I'll bet you we could find a contractor that'd be willing to do it, a lot cheaper, if they go out and look, instead of just giving it to someone in the ranks.
I do, I don't have to, I have any plans, that's what I do, that's what I do.
That's true.
They just build a job.
What are we spending money on now? Paying Beaumont to do it. We're paying, we're paying Beaumont to do it. And I'll bet you, I'll bet you it's a lot cheaper than you think it is to build.
Okay, see, they asked me to explain, and then I went home, I went to the roads, uh.
Oh, why you wanna go home, you having so much fun?
Uh, I'm sorry, thank you, uh, they're going to be voting on the tax rate for next year. And, uh, the tax assessor's office sends out their tax rate calculation worksheet, uh. This, it, well, it came out in July, and so what, so what the, the city does, it, the appraisal district assesses all the valuations of the homes, and then they send all the appraisals over to the tax assessor's office. And the city, uh, the tax assessor office calculates the next year's tax rate. And there's usually, there's, they give you three, and then council decides which one to assess or to accept. Okay, so. So, um, twenty twenty-two, the overall tax values in envelopes went up. Um, and which means, which that's part of the calculation, that's the beginning part of the calculation. Uh, total. Let's see what I said. Total valuation. Total taxable, twenty-two total taxable value, it's like it's, um, the adjusted amount is eighty million. A little over eighty million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, that's, that's within the two. Last, in twenty twenty-one, it was seventy million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, okay? So, once the tax assessor gets the valuation, the overall valuation, then they calculate three different rates. And the first one is called the known new revenue tax rate. Which means that they will calculate a per one hundred dollar tax rate that will generate the same, about the same amount of tax revenue that the city got the year before. So there's no, there's no increase. Yes, and so. Yeah, so in the, in years that, if, if, for a known new tax rate, no new revenue tax rate, in the year that your tax values go up, your tax rate goes down. If your tax values go down, your tax rate goes up, but you're still getting the same amount of money, the city's still getting the same amount of money. It's not a, it's not a raise in the years it goes up, it's just the values are lower. So that's the known new tax rate. The next one is called the, uh, voter approved tax rate. And voter approval tax rate, the voter approval tax rate is the highest tax rate that a tax taxing unit may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. And so it's based on the same. It, you, yeah, you have both, yeah, is that what y'all put on the ballot? No, okay. Uh, it's based on the same overall valuation, but it, it, it gives the city more money. more money.
And that, it says voter approved, but the voters don't vote on.
I don't know why they call that.
So if we don't have representation right, then it's not going on.
I, I, I don't know why they call it that.
They're calling it that, it does not what it is.
Uh, so, but that would, that would give, so the no new tax rate, the no new revenue tax rate will give the city about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which is about, what, they get every year, between one eighteen and one twenty, in tax, in property tax revenue in the city side, uh, so, the no new, the no new revenue tax rate is calculated, and then this, uh, this, this voter approval tax rate is, would, would give the city about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, not a whole heck of a lot, but it, that would be an increase, okay? And then, they also give, uh, the city, uh, the maximum amount, the maximum rate that the city could, uh, charge, but anything above that voter approval rate, it has to be, there has to be an election, okay? So, historically, historically, the city has always agreed to no new revenue tax rate, uh, and, uh, they coasted it in your, or, let me see what your original. That little, okay, so, uh, let me do that little, okay, so the no, okay, so let me find it, because this is like, so the no.
We gotta do that, so it doesn't really matter.
Oh, okay, here it is, the no, the no new revenue tax rate is point one four six seven seven three cents per one hundred dollars, that will give the city the same amount of money that they received in the past, because this year's voter approval tax rate is point one seven eight three two nine per one hundred. Okay, and that's, I'm just telling them, okay, so that's what they're voting.
Fourteen cents for not getting, no cash.
So I, I think they're gonna be voting for the no new revenue tax rate. Your, 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 your sales tax are forgery, which is giving y'all more dollars on the city side, so that kinda makes up for not increasing the tax rate. Is that all that you need?
Is there, any other questions for Charlotte?
How much you mad?
Ain't, ain't your dog calling you?
Huh?
Didn't your dog call on you?
No, my daughter is, my daughter had, my daughter had, she's twenty-five, and she had all four of her whiskers pulled out this morning, so I was being, you know, caregiver, and then she also has two little children, so I was being nice, not the two-year-old.
My youngest is fixing to do the same thing.
Oh, really?
I wish I could be there with him to do that, that's all.
It only took like thirty minutes.
Oh, I know, I know, the doctor's in and out, got them on quick.
Air hot.
Someone say no?
Yeah. That's not. Thank you, Ms. Charlotte.
And, uh, they have, Rita had to hold on, if, uh, the guy, we find, that's, that was. I will take that for the.
I mean, I, I'm not the sharpest that I can possibly.
Okay, we're gonna go back.
That's an understatement.
Get that out.
No.
Well, I tell the truth, that's good.
And we're gonna, uh, pause for a minute, we're gonna go back and go over the, the tax rate.
I make a motion that we.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we didn't know the tax.
Okay, ready? Do I have a second?
No.
Any discussion? All in favor? High seven. Uh, Charles.
You see.
Go ahead, go ahead. Any questions to, uh?
She's my help.
She's in, she's in. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? High seven.
Now, what do y'all see?
Thank you, Charlotte. What feeling is such a goodness? The community disaster loan. Thank you, Charlotte. Do I have a second? For the community disaster loan.
You need to call them to Monday.
Okay, um, any further discussion on that?
Yes, what's the value of the amount we're gonna ask?
Hundred and forty dollars.
Hundred and forty thousand, I need to be in there, but we don't want the whole, we don't wanna owe them that.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor? High seven. Uh, the general election. I have to say, hang on, just around. Do I have a motion to, uh, we've got to get the general election ballot, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Oh, sure.
Any discussion?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, for the general election, the order, um, I'd like permission for us to finalize and de-execute it on Monday, um, because that will be the day when all possible deadlines have been completed, and we'll be able to potentially also be able to declare some positions unopposed, and so it'll be cleaner if I can do, if we can finalize order after tomorrow, if that makes sense.
Definitely.
No, no, we can, we can order the general election.
And then we finalize it on Monday, the twenty-ninth, that's when the state finalizes.
It's, it's gonna be the first.
The council in the office will do the drawing.
Well, we'll, we'll, we may not do the drawings Monday, but that'll be when the housekeeper finishes, and then Monday we'll be geared up and finalize, so we, the, the council's voted, he approved the order of the general election, so it's done, then dissembled by the ballot, and that'll be submitted by Jersey County Clerk, they're very prospective on, uh, the details, uh, there may be some quitting, and they'll need to, uh, what we submit, and, and so I can do a more accurate general election ballot on Monday rather than today, so, um, we're approving it today, it's ordered, but all of the names submitted on the ballot will be given on Monday, and necessarily will be today, because there's another deadline with respect to the names that can be on the ballot with respect to unopposed. It, it's, this is primary, but we need to recognize in the business that the order, that the general election was, um, supported and entered today, but I will, I believe will, uh, make your effective on Monday, um, uh, because that will be the one that adds all the things, things to the clerk, for the ballot, create the ballot, has a lot of rules on it, before we can simple write it there.
Are you saying that the positions that are unopposed, there's still can be names added to that list?
Correct.
So there wasn't a deadline the other day? Or, or?
There wasn't a deadline, there was a deadline for the running ballot, but the, we've never had a running candidate.
Oh, I get you, okay.
We've never. I'm sorry.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, so, in theory, running candidates can be submitted tomorrow, but it's the same, it's the same as one that essentially is, the normal ones, ultimately, I mean, it's, uh, but, um, it's a distorted interpretation of the rules, and so being able to do it Monday, symbolize everything.
All right.
Officer. Did we find one of them? Let's go ahead and, like, do this presentation request, let's go back to that, do you wanna go ahead with your presentation request?
Sure, unfortunately, uh, Ms. Gaines, uh, covered me at the top there, so I'm a little angry, but I do want to, uh, I would say probably, they're represented in the city for, actually, fourteen, fifteen years, I would say like every two to four years, uh, we, there are citizens that make, uh, certain statements about our elected officials that rise above the normal sort of political comment that we're used to, uh, you know, part of being a part of a vigorous democracy is that everyone has different opinions, and the different opinions need to be shared, discussed, and become a part of the, you know, the overall discussion, sometimes however, in my experience, it rises above that with my very specific, uh, comments and accusations regarding, uh, very specific and demonstrable acts that can be verified, you can look, you wanna accuse someone of stealing money, we can go back and look and see whether they stole money, if there is, uh, allegations of, uh, embezzlement or impropriety, then we can go back and look at the, uh, financial accounts.
You're beating around the bush, you're, you're beating around the bush, you're, you're pointing this. You're pointing this at me.
As a result, I would say, whether it's part of the normal political cycle or otherwise, it's, uh, incumbent upon me to make observations or reports to the council, when there's enough, uh, comments made to me, uh, either through informal or formal channels, I would say, in the recent months, there's been a number of informal comments regarding, on, regarding the use of grant funds, and the accusations that particular council members and the mayor, um, disagreements over how they use them, and specifically accusations of where there's been misappropriation of them, I can tell you that, you know, the, the, after we've gone through a number of these cycles of political comment, after we've had actual cases of real embezzlement from an office administrator, after we instituted protocols for the past two years to protect against that, and after y'all see how difficult it is to even get the money, much less steal the money, uh, when it comes to the requests and use of grant funds, then, uh, it's probably worthy of me commenting that, I can confirm for the council that I review and constantly review, and I have an ethical responsibility, if I have a, um, if I believe that the institutional controls that the city has would permit any council member of any type to be able to access funds and use it in an inappropriate manner, then I would, would, um, direct it to law enforcement, full stop, and, um, I've received, you know, enough, um, complaints and comments from concerned citizens, not that they believe that particular accusations are true, but they're concerned that the polit, the political comments are being made, and my response is this, public, uh, many of the council members are public figures, and comments can be made about them, to the extent they make specific comments regarding the use of public funds, those are potential criminal acts, accusations of that kind are debatable if they're false, I've seen nothing with respect to the, uh, conduct of our auditors, our bookkeeper, structure of our, uh, the grant fund advisors.
How about the previous layer?
Times that we have to, um, uh, in the newest institutional controls that go using in obtaining grant funds to show that there's any indication whatsoever, and so, uh, you know, the, i- it is difficult to sometimes separate the truth from the false, but sometimes serious accusations require action, and, you know, after reviewing the way that we, our institutional controls are pleased, you know, to confirm with the council that any statements that any of the council members have been misusing our funds are likely entirely false, and y'all can see based upon, uh, the institutional control described by Ms. Gaines, how difficult it is for someone to take money for their own personal use, to get it out of an account in the city and take it for their own personal use, or take it from the city, it is just, it is, um, it's burdens.
Can I ask you a question?
It's not true.
This, this room, this room has four, at least four contractors in it right now, okay? We're not talking about taking money out of a fund and writing themselves a check, we got some contractors in here that deal with millions of dollars, okay? And they know what a kickback is, Drew, and I'm, and as far as the other part, we went to the Texas Rangers, okay, on this, on the, and you never mentioned her name about, you know, not being, you know, involved in anything.
Or Danny Cruz.
Or Danny Cruz, both of them moved out.
Yeah, but there, you know, I really honestly do not have any idea what you're talking about.
I believe, and that's why we, that's why Barbara Anderson promised me when I got on this council that she was gonna do a wedding, but she didn't, she gave you a wedding.
When you say about her and talking about Texas, or they talking about Barbara Anderson?
I'm talking about the previous mayor.
Okay, for that.
That's pretty easy to understand.
We, I can, I can tell you on the record right now, uh, that five people made complaints of the Texas Rangers, they interviewed us and looked at our institutional controls, found that they had no merit, no further action to pay, there was nothing to report, because they thought that there was absolutely no evidence for even starting an investigation.
So you're speaking for the Texas Rangers now?
I can tell you the Texas Rangers before that turned frankly to me. I, either I.
And I can believe that.
And they, they spoke with us, there was nothing to report, because they thought that there was, it was, that the complaints were trivial and false.
You weren't there when we brought the box of that, there you.
Can I ask a question?
Drew, good.
I was, I was there after they looked at the evidence.
Mayor, can I ask a question of him? I'd like, like to ask, uh, Mr. Drew a question, is it, um, is it not possible that this kind of thing would happen though? You're saying it's highly unlikely, but is it not impossible?
Well, you're asking a lawyer about possible, is that like one percent, half percent, or it's not likely, it's just like auditors not being able to look at everything that goes into now.
Okay, so you can't answer that question?
So, based upon mine, it's highly unlikely, more likely than not.
More likely than not, directed by.
Okay, so basically he can't answer that, that clearly, it's ambiguous, okay, thank you.
I would say that it would satisfy a clear and convincing, uh, standard, I would say that it would equal the standard that the civil court views to terminate the parent-child relationship, based upon that standard, I would say that there is no indication of misuse of public funds.
Okay, but my ask, what I was asking was, you were saying it was highly unlikely that it could happen, I'm saying, there is a chance that it could, right?
No, 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 I'm just saying there is, hey, there is virtually no chance.
Okay, virtually, okay, I got it, that's lawyer talk, yeah. That was just a question.
Hey Drew, is Dale Doc, he's gone? Want to remind him of his little pawn deal he could, did with us.
Yeah, how?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, let's finish. What are we going on?
What are we going on?
Well, can we go to this one about the lady that wants to get the bearings on board?
Yes.
They had to leave, they had to. I can explain it, they busted, they were digging, hole, 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 they busted them in, they're come a war, she came to me. We had to call the water department out here, they came out, called nine. Nine hundred something. Yeah, I was there.
They didn't call eight-one-one?
No, they didn't. No, they didn't call eight-one-one, but they were trying to install a defense, and they ended up busting the apartment.
They would've called, they would've called eight-one-one.
Let's just follow the jury, just solve any problem.
With, with we have pets.
Yeah, let's see, this photo, the variance, it's already product, but. Let's just vote on it. Do we wanna give them a payment money? I need to, you wrote about it, yeah.
I make a motion that we give them a payment.
I said.
Before, before I take the final vote, when she get ready to, this amount, I'm ready to shoot.
I just want her to pay for the eight, eight-one-one.
Any other?
Did either.
Any other, uh, comment or discussion on this?
They had none.
Any other comment or discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm, I'm standing.
If we still had bone mud, we wouldn't have had to worry about it, they would've come out and fixed it. Nothing would've been said.
If it would still be bone mud.
You could, you could cut bone mud, they come, they come mark it for you. They had, they had mapped everything in, every water line here, every meter.
That's where I just find.
I know, I know water lines are, they don't even know. I know meters, ain't that for real, I know.
My meters aren't even measured at this point. I go around them and.
She just like to build a horse, she likes to pay for it.
The weight increase, and if you were able to approve it, or if you were able to decline, don't write any for its energy. I mean, we, we declined.
We're, we're voting tomorrow. I make a motion. Every board, a motion. Yeah, it's always, uh, you have a motion.
And to decline the rate. All in favor? High. Um, we're gonna use the road one, that he wanted. To grow to precipitation and to report that.
If we send in our package to, I'm making a request to the council to, uh, purchase some rock to have on hand for the county to use to do road repairs with. We've made an agreement with the county. They purchased this rock one time a year. And they're gonna let us pay you back on our purchase. And we're gonna be bonded by this rock, by the rail car. We already identified a place where we can store it. And as long as we have it on hand, it's much more likely we're gonna get more work from them to come out and do more roads. Now, this is not all the material that's going to be required to do. Take this note. Probably about sixty percent of the cost of the material. So we're still gonna need more material. But purely need is in liquid form, you cannot buy, pre-buy and stock it because the stuff separates. Once it separates, you can't use it. But this would help us tremendously in being able to get the county to come out and do road work for us. Okay, we got the material on hand, if they have the time, they have the equipment, they'll come out and they'll do some work for us. How much they'll do, and when they'll do it, is up in the air. All of that depends on their workload, weather conditions, all kinds of stuff. Okay, so we can't say we're gonna do this section of road. We've already came up with a long time, we went through the community, we've identified the roads and stuff that we need repaired first. So we gave that list to the county, to say which one we want, you know, which roads need to be done. I actually went with the county supervisor, it's over the road crews, and we drove down some of these streets, and we looked at the ones that need actual, where you need to take up, hard road and stuff to do prepare. Most of our roads don't really need that, the base is good. They can be resurfaced. Now, our, our agreement with the county is that they'll do one half mile a year. However, they unofficially said that if they've got the time, and they've got the equipment, and they have the material, then they do more than just that half mile. Just because of, especially on resurfacing, they can resurface a road at a day. So, this, when they resurface it, they don't have to take anything up, they go in there and, um, maybe level it out a little bit if it needs to be leveled out. Fill in what little holes and stuffs might be there, come in with a base coat, the rock, then a top coat, they're done. Around the machine, it'll do it all. Yeah, they can come here and do it. Okay, thank you, we need to have the rock on hand. Okay, so, I'm very optimistic with what the county is committing. Now, let me make this, some of you have been here for the meetings, and we talked about all these different roads that we got going on. I'm gonna give a report here in just a minute on the big road. For the road work that I'm talking about here, what we just walked for, is what I call the side streets. Okay, this is not sweet gum, this is not river bend, this is, uh, not the main thoroughfare road, this is the side streets. Those are the ones that they do fairly easily. This amount of rock would give us enough to do about two miles of work. So if they don't get it all done in one year, it's more than enough. Now, when I say they can't commit, I like to give you a prime example about how things develop for them, and when they can do it, I put in a work order over a month ago for them to come out and fill puddles. Okay? And since we've had these rains and stuff, the roads got worse, I actually contacted them over the weekend. Said, is there any way that y'all could possibly get out here, or you can try to get out here, unless somebody's done it? It called me Monday, said, right now, they didn't know when they could possibly get out here. It calls me this morning, said, we will be there today to fill puddles. That's how quickly things can change. Okay, I wanna be able to notice, I'll go over there, fill it later.